Let's get started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowzen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Voise.
All right. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, the pledge will be led this evening. Ms. Wilder, do you want to lead the pledge, or would you like someone in-house to do it?
I can do it.
All right.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended by removing Resolutions Number Nine and Eleven.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st, 2025 Regular Council Session as proposed.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. It is now time for public comments. It's your opportunity to speak on non-agenda-related items. Yes, sir.
There is Stacy Roberts, 411 Almond Street. The last six words that Ms. Wilder said was liberty and justice for all is what I've been commenting about, and I'm going to continue to come. The last thing I was communicating about was how the machine that was blocking, I want to say, the investigation or any questions about the John Deere money, which started before the attack on my daughter in Urmandale, Urmandale, Iowa Police Report 9914612. Before that happened, there was threats and intimidation going on, which I had contacted the police about. So I'm going back to how far benign neglect has been following me through this. And it brings me to, like I said, me and my brother didn't get a chance to reconcile because this is allowed to just be a part of our natural being now. There's too many families that have been adversely affected, and they're seeing their grandchildren and children being affected by that same machine that at one time called itself a corn-bilt mafia down when I was in Des Moines, which is just human beings that got children that want to go to the park and play in a amusement park just like ours. So really, they're not real intelligent with being a part of this, as far as I'm concerned. Like I was saying, June 21st of 99, my daughter was 11 and absolutely terrorized on that day, and it altered her life in more than one way. Like I said, they drew first blood, and it's going to be keep dropping, I guess. At that time, it was when she was 26 years old. She had told me that she had got contacted, and I had been sending her money and taking her money to Des Moines, and they told her that if she continued to communicate with me, they was going to make it worse on her than before. And when she told me that we were having lunch, and of course, I couldn't finish lunch, and two guys had positioned themselves behind me enough to intimidate her because she kept looking back. And I told her I was doing some work in Des Moines. I was going to bring her another 300 bucks in about 45 minutes to an hour. By the time I got to where she was supposed to have been at work, they moved her and moved her, and I haven't talked to my daughter in right at 13 years this coming June. So this failure to act or to investigate is, like I said, very much a public safety. It's not good. And if you see the last few days of attacks that have happened throughout the United States, like I said, to allow this to continue and this machine begin to fire up on somebody else, they will not react the way I will. And all of you who are supposed to play any type of a part need to listen to what I'm telling you. Have a good night.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on non-agenda-related items?
I do have a question. I'm not familiar with this process, so I apologize in advance. When do we get to comment on, like, Number 18? Is it, like, you guys talk about it, and then we get to say something, or is it now our chance?
Because, yeah. They can't. They can't comment on it. It's removed from the agenda. So what can some kind of?
No.
Anybody in favor of removing 18?
I have no reason to remove 18.
It's in favor. I'm sorry?
There's a question regarding comments for Number 18. Do I have? Do I have the chief just comment on what this is at that time? Because I think it was this confusion in the newspapers.
There is.
From what was actually stated to what's actually happening. And so first, let me talk about it right now. So, Chief, you want to get up and talk about the contract? Because it makes it seem like this is normally what happens for every full-time city employee, but the article makes it seem a little bit different. But yes, sir.
Sure. Yeah, Rob Duncan, Chief of Police. So I think Number 18 is the payout for Officer Northup. This is a time that he accrued throughout his career with the police department. It's contractual. We don't have a say in yes or no, he does or doesn't get it. It's his comp time, which I think he had 400-some hours accrued, vacation time, and other unscheduled benefits. So it's a standard process that we would do for anybody that leaves the department.
So every employee for accrued vacation, sick leave time, casual leave, compensatory time, they all receive the percentage of that once they leave, based upon how much they use or not. So if a person had 30 vacation days to start the year, and they ended up having 20 by the time they were either terminated or resigned, they get the remainder of it. So this wasn't, the way it read, though, was like, this is what we all negotiated as a buyout. This is what the person receives from leftover vacation, sick time, and comp time. That's all that is. And so every employee, full-time employee with leftover vacation time, gets that in cash when they leave. So that's what that is.
Does it retrograde from the date of incident, when we filter?
So that's, the question is if it goes back in time. He was still an employee. It was being investigated through the Attorney General's office, and then his termination ended up happening shortly after the charges happened. So no, it doesn't go back. Unfortunately, it was a lengthy process to get to the point where they end up filing charges on him. So until the actual resignation happened, it still continues all the way through that date.
So that's what that was. But it made it seem, when you read it, it made it seem as if this person was receiving something that other folks don't receive when they leave. This is part of the WPPA contract that they followed. So that's
That's correct.
That's what that was.
Do you know how much he incurred from June 1st, 2024 until June 20, July 27?
What's in the debate now?
Because of course, he has the abundance of days off. He got paid to the network after filling some job for a year.
I could answer probably most of that. The majority of the payout is from his comp time, compensatory time. Had he even earned, he would have made it, taken comp time instead of overtime pay throughout his career. We can bank up to 480 hours. So I think 432 hours. I think something like that. I'm not sure on the exact amount. That would have been the majority of it, and he would have not gained any more comp time after the accident because he's been off.
It's publicly available in the council packet, too.
I don't think we should be debating it anymore.
So, all right.
I guess the last one. I'm so sorry. So I guess is the here to all of you guys to say aye, as in everybody agrees to AM out X amount of dollars? Is that the go-up per year, nay?
Yeah, it'll all be voted on at one time. But yeah, this is every employee that leaves, regardless of termination, regardless of retirement, regardless of leaving, they all, this is part of a standard contract. All right. So normally, we don't even take questions during this time, but because this is such a sensitive subject to so many, we wanted to, you know, give the opportunity to be able to ask a couple of questions. And we did that just for you guys, because this is a very tough subject, and we want people to understand they're not doing anything outside of what has been done for the last 50 years. So, all right. Anyone else with public comments, non-agenda-related items?
Hello?
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Hale, and I am the president of the Board of Directors for Main Street Waterloo at 512 Mulberry Street. So on behalf of our organization, I just wanted to share some really exciting updates from our district this summer on a positive light. I want to start with a big thank you to Mayor Hart for being such a great sport and stepping into the dunk tank in our July Friday Lou.
I stepped in and I limped out.
Thanks to your eager participation, we raised nearly $2,000 to support our continued efforts here in downtown. This is just one of the many exciting and fun updates from this summer. Of course, we just had Irish Fest this weekend, the 19th Annual Irish Fest, and it was successful. I had a lot of fun on Saturday. Additionally, Studio 13 officially opened this past weekend to a fantastic reception. We're thrilled to welcome a new business owner from the Cedar Rapids, Iowa City area, who saw the progress we're making right here in Waterloo, and knew that this is where he wanted to plant his business. That's a strong signal that the work we're doing is creating real economic opportunity. Looking ahead, we're gearing up for our annual fundraising dinner. In even-numbered years, we host dinner across the bridge. Last year was our first annual. In odd-numbered years, like 2025, we host Notes of the District, which is an award celebration. This year's event will take place on Saturday, September 27, and it's all about celebrating the incredible things that have happened downtown over the past two years. I think we can all agree, it's good to celebrate the good. We'll be recognizing some truly inspiring individuals and organizations. For example, the Visual Impact Award will go to JSA Development for their work at 425 Franklin Street in redevelopment. The Power Up Downtown Award will be presented to Bud Jones in recognition of his ongoing commitment, advocacy, and work to bring downtown stakeholders together for collaboration. The Volunteer of the Year Award will honor Chris Fecht for her tireless hours to our community, not just at Main Street, but elsewhere as well. This is Your Downtown Award will go to Dan Corbett, a tribute to the enthusiasm, creativity, and ability to make everyone feel like they belonged here in downtown. And last but certainly not least, David Deeds will be honored with the Jim Walsh Impact Maker Award, which recognizes individuals whose passion and vision have made a lasting impact on downtown Waterloo's revitalization. If you want to celebrate these amazing folks along with us, we hope to see you all at Notes of the District. That date again is September 27. It will be a night of celebration, really great food, and dueling pianos. It will be a joyful evening and a needed reminder of what's possible, and we all can work together. Thank you again, council, for your continued support of Main Street Waterloo and our downtown district. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, you have any comments?
Mayor.
Sir.
I had emailed Mr. Knutson earlier today, and I just asked for an update on the Laporte Road project. I've been getting some questions from people that live in that area.
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. As Mr. Bowzen sent his email, I should have been a little more specific back in June during the council meeting and said that Laporte Road from KOA up to Grim Street would be open hopefully by the end of June, rather than indicating that maybe the whole thing was going to be. So that's my fault, and I apologize for that. Currently, based on the meetings today, the contractor is thinking that from KOA up to the Capri College Drive, which is just south of Grim Street, should be open Labor Day. And then from there up to Grim, probably in another few weeks after that, should be open then. The section from Grim to BOP, we'll see if we decide to do that this year. As everybody knows, the month of July was terribly wet. The contractors lost pretty much the entire month of July in order to do work. I don't want to get us to the point where we tear out from Grim to BOP and then have it sit closed over the winter time. So we'll see as we get further along whether or not we try to do that yet this year or not. I don't, we'll just have to see what the weather we think is going to do. Just so folks realize, too, in addition to the rain delays, we've also had issues with some utilities getting relocated, getting moved, and all of that stuff. That's taken a little longer than was expected. We had some issues with some additional water main that we didn't realize where it was actually. It wasn't at where we thought it was, so we ended up having to redo about 1,000 feet of that. So there's been some things out there that have contributed to where we are at this point in time, anyway. But that's kind of the update at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I have some concern about having to do reconstruction on Huntington with Waterloo Fiber. I've been notified that there is a potential, there's potential wire going down under areas that we are going to have to redo for the roundabout or for other things. Is that just something we can look out for, making sure that we don't have to go back and redo this?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. We do try to do that, Mr. Childs. With Waterloo Fiber, they were well into the design and the build long before we even knew we were going to end up with doing anything on Huntington and Katoaski because of the schools. So in this particular case, no, there wasn't a whole lot that we could do. But we do work with all of our utilities, whether it's Waterloo Fiber, Mid-American, Metronet, you name them. We have to work with all of them. But we do try to make sure that, and I had one just today, to your point, with Waterloo Fiber and a crossing on Broadway Street that we'll be doing next year. So we're working with them to make sure that whatever they would be installing now is going to work with their location, with what we're going to be doing in the future next year. So we do try. Sometimes, things just happen, and we don't know about it. Hindsight's always 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Why Jamie's still up there? If I may elaborate on that, then. So, so the public knows, then if we do have to redo laying of wire for Waterloo Fiber, that's going to be another amendment and additional cost that the City of Waterloo is going to have to incur because of this school location?
No, that is, utility relocates around the individual utilities. So whatever cost there is to relocate Waterloo Fiber, will be up to Waterloo Fiber to do that, just like if it was Mid-American Energy, or Metronet, or Lumen, or whomever.
Yeah, but it'll be an additional cost, I'm assuming.
I assume there's going to be a cost, yes, to Waterloo Fiber, but yes, that'll be borne by the utility.
Which is Waterloo Fiber in this case?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would they have to pay that anyway?
Not if they put it in the ground first, and then have to come back and tear it up and put it back in again.
But it's part of the budget right now. If we weren't doing the project, they'd still have to, they would still be doing this, so they wouldn't do it.
It's up to each utility. For when the city does a contract, does a road project, doesn't, whatever we're doing, utilities are required to move at their expense. So for our road project, even if this had nothing to do with the schools, and it was Huntington Road, and we were just doing it as a city project, and they had to move, it would be on Waterloo Fiber or any other utility to relocate their stuff out of our way. So it doesn't cost us, the taxpayers, the, you know, doesn't, we don't get charged the costs as taxpayers to relocate that stuff. So.
What I'll do, I'll have a conversation with Eric, though. Make sure I communicate that with him, to make sure we're aligned. Try to be, but I'll make sure I have a conversation, Steve and John. I'll make sure I'll talk to him about it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just wondering if we can have an update on the mall situation and kind of where we are with that purchase agreement?
Mr. Anderson.
The developer's purchase agreement?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So they are working on the, going through the documents for the acquisition of the mall, and that's the first step, then moving toward demolition. As you can imagine, with the amount of tenants that were in there, there's still some active leases that they are going through. There was also some lawsuit judgments and some liens that they had to work through. At this point, they are working to bring an amendment to us to allow them to continue for the acquisition, and ideally, we would still be under demolition this calendar year.
Anyone else? All right.
Yes, Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bill's Payment 1A1 for July 28, 2025, in the amount of $4,126,470.44. And for August 4, 2025, in the amount of $853,230.33.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take Number One, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to receive and file approval publication of notice of public hearing, that's for the fiscal year 2026 budget amendment.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on item number one on the agenda, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to adopt a resolution approving fiscal year and 2026 budget amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Could we just get Bridget to explain why we're doing this for the public?
All right. Who's Bridget? Bless you.
Bridget Wood, Finance Director. The reason why we're doing the amendment this early, or a amendment this early, is because there were some TIF projects that didn't close in 2025 that we intended to. This budget amendment gives us the authority to use the bond funds that we bonded for last year for them.
And what projects were those?
It would be for the Crossroads Mall project and for the City Hall project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take Number Two?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Malcolm Cleopie to rezone approximately 0.27 acres of land from C-2 Commercial District to C-2, C-Z Conditional Zoning District to allow an aquaculture shrimp farming wholesale business located at 2625 Falls Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that has any comments about shrimp farming, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance Number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning MAC referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a request by Mann Road Storage LLC for a rezone of approximately 0.27 acres of land from C-2 Commercial District to C-2, C-Z Conditional Zoning District to allow an aquaculture shrimp farming wholesale business located at 2625 Falls Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I had emailed asking about if there will be any potential smell coming from something like this. Does anybody know? Does anybody even know what shrimp farming is? So I guess, I guess my question would be then, is there, since it's a new business in city limits, is it, is there like code? Code violations or something like that? Is there like follow-up inspections that will be normally made for a business like of this nature?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. Yeah, this is obviously not a specific business we had in the zoning ordinance, which is why it's into the conditional zoning. You know, it is a commercial location along a major corridor, so there is housing nearby, however. So we did look into that. We didn't see anything that would indicate there'd be any smells. There is some wording in the zoning ordinance that if any use becomes obnoxious by way of like smoke smell and things like that, then we can do further investigations. So we could look at it in the future if there's any, you know, complaints or concerns that are warranted.
Good. That would, I think that would satisfy the question that I had from someone, so.
Are you the developer, sir?
Thank you.
Are you the developer, sir? Is this your item? It was.
Of course, I'm planning a zoning.
Noel, I kept saying, like, ask him out. All right. So there's something stating in the ordinance, if the smell is, we can come back and revisit it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take Number Three, please?
Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to see, file approval publication of notice of public hearing, and request by City Waterloo to vacate a 10-foot drainage easement in lots four and five of Warp Second Edition in the M2P Planned Industrial District located at and adjacent to 4050 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to drainage easements? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral written comments and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, considering pass for the first time, an ordinance approving a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a 10-foot to vacate a ten-foot drainage easement in lots four and five of Warp Second Edition, uh, the M two P Planned Industrial District located at and adjacent to forty fifty Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take one, two, and three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I've moved that we adopt resolution approving an ordinance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in Section eleven dash three dash two preliminary plats and Section eleven dash three dash three final plats relating to the approval of the minor plat of Austin Plats, a two-lot commercial subdivision in the C dash P Planned Commercial District located east of one twenty-two Blackhawk Road. Resolution two, approving the request by the Waterloo, by the City of Waterloo for the minor plat of Austin's plat, a two-lot commercial subdivision in the C dash P Planned Commercial District located east of one twenty-two Blackhawk Road. And last, third, request by Harold Reichs surveying on behalf of Gregory H. Stifin for the minor plat of Parcel C and D in the R dash two, one and two Family Residence District located southeast of four one nine two Logan Avenue.
Second.
That motion, that motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that'd like to comment on item one, two, or three?
Forest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road, number one. And number two, I have, um, property in that area. I would like to know what this means, what they're changing, what kind of business is gonna be going in there. Anything you can tell me would be appreciated.
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So this is the big green area, uh, just east of the Fletcher Roundabout on the north side of university. Um, this is basically subdividing it into two lots and specifying where the easements are. There is a sanitary and a storm sewer easement in there, um, but getting it ready for development. The site is zoned for commercial use, so we would expect to put, uh, some commercial businesses in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. All right, Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's take four by itself.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to approve the following resolution approving a development agreement with thirty-three fifty University Avenue LLC for tax exemptions for the rehab of an existing building into fifty-eight multiple family units with a five thousand dollar infill incentive for each unit totaling two hundred ninety thousand with a minimum assessed value of two point five million, located at thirty-three fifty University Avenue, which is within the consolidated urban revitalization area, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with second. Of course, Counsel knows that this was an item that we previously had, uh, on the agenda. Uh, it did not move forward. Uh, we do have the developer, uh, here, Mr., oh, Mr. Dalstrom. Uh, but first, um, we'll hear from Mr. Dryer and then Mr. Dalstrom, just a little bit about your vision. I know we've come a long way to get to this point, but a little bit about your vision. Yes, sir?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Uh, I guess my first question is, or my first comment is that on a prior, uh, building thing, when I went back in the computer, uh, they have a couple of, a part, a couple of houses, or maybe they're connected, I don't remember, that are eleven hundred square feet. Uh, this is fifty-eight units. So how many square feet, looking at the plan, it doesn't look like very much, very many square feet for each unit. How many square feet are each one of these? Cause if it's a, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna live in anything less than nine hundred square feet. And, uh, the plan I saw, it doesn't look good. Thank you.
All right. Noel, do you wanna kinda tee this up, or you want Mr. Dalstrom to go, go first?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Counsel. Um, so the vision is, first off, the building is in great disrepair. We, we have vandalism almost on the daily. Uh, when it was being ran, at the time, at the, at the end of its life, uh, it, it, it just was tough. Um, we, it, it just fell into, to great disrepair. So we removed everyone from the building and, uh, started to cast a vision for the future. Um, in, in that vision, previously, it was over, it was right around ninety, uh, hotel units back, um, when this was first constructed. So the vision was to nearly double the average size of the units. Uh, we have two similar projects in Cedar Falls, although most of those units are smaller than this. Uh, and, and they've done extremely well. One thing it, it really does is it brings affordable units. Um, it, it allows, uh, we, we include utilities, internet, and it allows folks, um, uh, to move into something that is very nice, um, but it could, could be more of a starter home for them, an apartment. It, it's not affordable everywhere anymore, right? It's, it can be very expensive to live anywhere, whether, no matter what the condition is. And sometimes on the lower end, we all know, not just Waterloo and Cedar Falls, but really across the, the United States, that lower end housing, when we, when we, it, it's, it's really unlivable at times. And so when, when people are just starting out, they, what, what they can afford is something, they go in there and, you know, they can have mold, they can have something that they're just not proud of to be in, and, and, uh, it's just, could be unsafe, could be unsanitary. And the, the great thing about this type of housing and the vision of this is to create a place where it is affordable, it is safe, it's brand new. Everything will be brand new. Uh, new electrical, new HVAC, um, new flooring, new paint, new appliances, and something that we really, to my knowledge, we don't have a lot of in the city of Waterloo or in the Cedar Valley. So that is really the vision. It's, we just opened, uh, the one that we just opened in Cedar Falls, um, leased, uh, completely every single unit instantly, folks that, uh, that need this type of housing. Um, there are some bigger units in this one, uh, so I'm, I'm excited to bring that. We, we have a project in Waterloo that's right around the nine hundred dollar, uh, a month, and we get over, I would guess somewhere around thirty inquiries a week for folks that, that need to be around that range. And we would be under that range for some of this. And so that, that's the vision, Mayor Hart, and, and seeing that the, the Waterloo's vision is to bring eight hundred over, uh, a period of years, we, we'd be excited to bring, uh, nearly sixty of those with this, this one project.
Yeah, I remember visiting it a couple of years ago. So, um, I think I rode by, was it today? Let's see. Uh, work being started and happening there.
We, we had to get the demo done. Also, we had to get the fence up.
Right.
Whatever's there gets stolen. We, uh, you know, people that transition from, uh, you know, pathways and it's tough, it's, it can be a tough situation of our geography of where we're located. And, um, but maybe this could be a place in the future that they, they could land and have a good place instead of, uh, a bad place to, to live. But yeah, we're, we're excited to get the demo out of there and, uh, just to make sure that no one, um, is trying to live there.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I know, Counsel, um, any questions, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
So how many square feet are these? That's what Mr. Dryer was asking, the average square footage of these, because you've got a small kitchenette, a small living area, a closet, and a bathroom.
I, I'd be speaking out of turn if I, if I would give you, to give you an exact, but the average overall would be in that four to five hundred range. Um, we have some, I know it's hard to believe, but we have some that average two hundred and twenty in Cedar Falls, and then three hundred and a little over three hundred recently. Fanny and Freddie, who, uh, do the lending for, uh, a lot of the multifamily, sixty percent of the multifamily in the United States, they have a requirement to be over two hundred and fifty or over three hundred and fifty, and we meet that requirement for this property.
And what were you, were you looking at for market rate rental?
It, it would range, and it's, it'd be far too early for me to say, but the, the, the pro forma would be somewhere starting in the, the seven, eight hundred dollar range and then move up from there. But the, really, the market will, will tell us.
Basically, the size of a, of a, of a small double garage is somewhere in that range of six hundred to nine hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I would invite you and I would, I would tour the, the project in Cedar Falls with you anytime to show you. I, I think you'd be shocked about how well it lives.
Are those close to the college?
No.
It's nowhere, nowhere close. We don't have any college students live there. I'm just curious, who you're, who you're renting them to?
Not, not college students.
My, my only concern and one of the reasons I voted Noel in the past is that it's remodeling. It was rentals before, it's rentals now, it's remodeling. And it got, I know it got pushed through to, to allow that with the Counsel's discretion in the Elevate Housing Program, but I, I just have a real issue paying for remodeling. As calling it infill development for remodeling. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I serve a large number of people who are desperate to look for a place to live that's quality. They would take a tiny home, a small space, um, rather than to be homeless. So, um, there's a desperate need for this, and someone has to rise to the occasion to meet the needs of the people that are hurting the greatest. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I understand Mr. Bozen's concern, uh, completely with setting any precedent for this, but with the Counsel's discretion being able to be selective for each one, I think that's important. I've received a lot of complaints about this building, it's my ward. And I remember when I was meeting with a constituent who lives, who, who worked at Pathways and would describe the situation that would happen. And at the time, uh, cause this was prior to my election, they had safety issues, concerns of the, the employees did, of going to their car at night due to what was happening in that location. And I'm so thankful that that has been closed down and that situation has been partially resolved. And I think this will complete that resolution. Um, you're not asking for additional tax rebates in here, other than what's already given by the Cura. So I, I mean, we, we've done more for less, is the way I see this. So I see this as a net positive in bringing in places, people to have a home. And I know plenty of people that would want a home in that four to five hundred square that are, are younger, that don't wanna have to deal with a yard, don't wanna have to deal with anything. They just wanna go into their house, live in a single bedroom, and then move out when they're ready to move out and not have any commitment. And that's becoming more and more popular with people in my age range. So, um, I'm in support of this, even though I do understand Mr. Bozen's concern with precedent setting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So you referenced, um, a similar building in Cedar Falls that you developed?
Mm-hmm.
Where was that located?
We had one at forty-seven eleven University and forty-one one seven University.
Okay. And they are the same size, um, units?
Smaller.
They're smaller than this even? And do you know what the average tenant, number of tenants in each unit is? I mean, is this a multifamily?
It's usually one.
It's a one person?
Yeah.
So these are, so we're marketing this for a single individual, fifty-eight?
It can be two. It can be a couple, can be one. It's just.
Because you, you almost have to have a wall, one of them, beds that come out of a wall, right? Unless they're gonna be sleeping on their couch.
Murphy beds, we do have that, yeah.
Is that what they, these are? Cause they look very small on the, on the, the drawings, are the things that we have here.
Yeah, the vast majority have, uh, have Murphy beds, that's what they're called. And then that allows to live as a couch during the day, drop down as a bed at night. Um, so we, we definitely do that.
Okay. And is this, is this labeled low-income housing then? Is that what the project, is that's?
No, we do not go for any low-income housing. I, I, I just, I'm not a developer that goes after low-income housing, I'm all for it. I just don't have the, the wisdom or the experience in the low-income housing tax credit. Uh, uh, it's just not this project. I do think it will serve those that are in
Sure, hopefully.
that, that range, um, or moderate, low to moderate, but it's not technically a low-income project by any means.
Okay, and then, and then what do you, what's your personal opinion then on of, on what we're talking about as far as a remodel? And, and receiving the, the incentive package that's being presented here as a remodel? Now, is this, is this common? Is this new? Is this something new, Noel? Or, you know, like we said, we're setting a precedent, and I know, I don't care if it's, it ends up being the best building in the city, Cedar Valley, but we're setting a precedence. Is there any concern about that with you, Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So the Elevate Housing policies that we recently adopted were based on what we are seeing other communities are doing as well to compete. Um, there's some communities that are giving ten years, um, at a hundred percent tax incentives for multifamily housing. Um, some of them are budding us, some of them in the Cedar Rapids area and all that. So we're definitely trying to be competitive in what we can do to get developers to redevelop in this area. Just a further breakout of the, the units, there's twenty-seven efficiency units, there's twenty-five one-bedroom units, um, which would probably be more typical for if there is two people living in there or something. There's three two-bedroom units and then three accessible units. So there is a, a little bit of a mix of the, the square footage and the designs in there for people.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if no one else has.
I may have one more question after you, sir.
Sir.
Thank you. Uh, when will construction start?
We are in the, the demolition phase right now, just to, and then just having people on site, so we don't have the, uh, the homeless population living there. But it would be hopefully tomorrow.
Okay. And, and when do you intend, or, I know with rain, but, uh, on being completed, when people can start moving in?
You know, the leasing season really picks up in April. So it'd be my goal to beat that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Mr.? Yes, sir.
And just one last question, and for clarification for people that may be wondering how something that gets voted down before gets brought back onto the agenda, is there an explanation on how that's done? And can somebody tell me how that works?
Mrs. Falcone.
So when a motion gets voted down, um, this is, and this comes out of our city code, the Counsel can make a motion to reconsider, which is what we had at the, um, Counsel, at our previous Counsel meeting. If the motion to reconsider passes, then the agenda, then the item goes to the next available agenda meeting to be voted on. So that's why these are on the agenda currently. Um, explanation about that was emailed out to Counsel, um, after the meeting that these were voted down, cause I had quite a few inquiries, so, um, that's the overview of the process.
So does it have to be a Counsel member that brings it back, or can anybody bring it back?
No, it has to be a Counsel member.
So a, a first and a second?
Only, only a Counsel member can vote on agenda items, so that's why it has to be a Counsel member. Then it has to be a member, um, of the prevailing side, or excuse me, it has to be somebody who didn't vote against the item. So in our circumstances, we had a couple of members that were absent, so Ray Foist made the motion since he was absent from that meeting. And then anybody can second it.
And it was seconded by who?
I couldn't tell you offhand.
At your child's.
But, um,
Just wanted to make sure.
So any member of City Council can make the second.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear when, how that was done. Thank you.
I have one last question, if everyone's done. For Mr. Anderson, where is the two hundred ninety thousand dollars coming from?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So we do have nuisance, uh, bonds that we can use for projects, or we could use the, uh, university TIF funds, um, so we can discuss, uh, which one makes better sense.
That, but that won't come before the Counsel?
No, it would just be paid from one of those as two eligible.
How does, how does infill remodeling fall under nuisance bond money? Because that's bond money we gotta pay back.
The nuisance bond money is 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 also described as a housing improvement type funds for improvements to housing conditions.
Okay, because I, people, I hate to be under the assumption that TIF money is not money or it's free money, because it's not.
Correct.
I mean, it's coming out of the TIF and it's gotta be paid back and and.
Yeah, the TIF funds have to be used for improvements inside the TIF or or released.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, how much is this going to, is it going to generate any, with the, all the improvements that's being made? Is it going to generate taxable value going right back into that TIF or is it a wash?
Obviously, it's vacant now, so we'll have people living there. I think the waterworks anticipated about six thousand eight hundred dollars per per year, just in additional water use at the site. We didn't have a chance to to figure up additional sewer revenue or anything like that. But then you'll have people living there, driving there, you know, obviously if they're buying gas nearby, we're we're getting road use funds, if they're buying goods and services nearby, we're getting local option money. So it's it's always a benefit for a lot of extra kind of non-direct revenue to the city.
Following up on that.
Yes, sir.
There's no grocery stores around there, that's a that's a that's a food desert now. I mean, people in that live in that area, you talk about going to grocery stores, they gotta go to Cedar Falls. They gotta go to the fairway in Cedar Falls, that's their closest grocery store.
If I lived there, I'd go to Ainsborough High V.
You you drive the extra miles, but I'm just saying that that that's, you live closer to it than than that.
The fact that when you think about the city's strategic goal, not everybody can afford a two bedroom, three bedroom house. So this gives us an opportunity to have some options for people, regardless of where they're at in life or their situation. So I don't vote, but it it's good to see different options of housing for people. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Sorry, Mr. Boz-
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Did you have a question?
Well, probably it was just a comment, I'm sorry.
She started before the vote went to Mr. Boson, but.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking about when I worked in the field of substance abuse and people who were getting their lives together and who needed a place to kind of live where they could be sober and go to work. And so they would start a new job but not have the the money to pay a lot of money for rent so they would get a chance to get their their bearings and start to contribute to the community as a viable citizen, pay taxes and et cetera. And I see this as being something like that, you know, so because those individuals, if they end back up on the streets and they recidivate and the whole cycle starts again. So I just wanted to add that comment, that's what I saw as I heard him speaking, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start over. Mr. Boson?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take number five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving an amendment to the development and minimum assessment agreement with FDP OC LLC originally approved October first, twenty twenty-four for the city to acquire a portion of property located at five oh three Commercial Street for future downtown development and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second?
The motion has been made, I'm sorry, the motion has been made with the second. This is another one. Yes, sir.
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Number five is is, I guess, how much are we gonna pay for a building that's attached to another building that's in a bad location as far as I can see for for anybody to want to develop into it? But we're gonna buy it? I, we don't already own that old courier building?
Mr. Anderson, can you reiterate a little bit about the project for those that may not have seen the last council meeting?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. So the West Side Courier Building is privately owned by the Roy Carver Junior Estate and it's been vacant for a number of years. So looking at trying to get that project moving ahead, there are, the developers are online to describe the project further. We did a previously approved development agreement to this for fifteen years of tax rebates, ninety-five, ninety and eighty-five, five years each. It was gonna create seventy-eight units and the increase was gonna go from one million in taxable value to six or to seven point five million. This amendment, and then if they remove the metal building and build another eight thousand square foot metal building, either moving that one or a new one in one of our industrial parks, there was a two hundred thousand dollar grant for that. And then we also did pay them, we cut the cost of removing the metal panels on the outside of the courier side that were causing problems for upper floor residential since the historic people would not allow for, the historic state offices would not allow for those metal panels to be removed or turned into windows. So you wouldn't be able to have windows on upper floor residential facing the street. This amendment will change that from seventy-eight to seventy units, which again would lower the five thousand per unit reimbursement to to three fifty. We are adding in that we would be buying the north one hundred and thirty-two feet where the metal building is. I know there was questions on that five hundred thousand dollar amount. We did have appraisals in the downtown type area at about twenty-five sixty-six to twenty-five sixty-eight dollars per square foot. This price is about twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents per fair, per square foot. So we think it's a fair market price, if not a little bit lower than that because there may be some groundwork to do. So moving ahead, we believe that this amendment will allow for a eighteen to twenty million dollar project to move ahead in downtown Waterloo.
I know we'll have questions. No questions?
Can you tell how much we're paying for it?
We'd be paying five hundred thousand dollars for the north one hundred and thirty-two feet or northeast one hundred and thirty-two feet where the metal building is.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
First of all, it says originally approved on October first of twenty twenty-four, that was when it was filed with the county. It was originally approved on August fifth of twenty twenty-four. And that didn't get corrected, I brought that up at the, four weeks ago. According to the development agreement, they had one year to start construction from when we approved it, which is August fifth of twenty twenty-four. I didn't support it then, I can't support it now. We've got, out of our downtown TIF, whether it's bonds we gotta pay back or whatever, we got seven point three million allocated to hardcore facility, five million for remodeling City Hall, one point three five million in soft cost of City Hall, five hundred thousand dollars in in architectural fees, six point two million dollars going to Mr. Blackwell for remodeling these buildings and one point five to five million dollars to hard up the police department. We're looking at about twenty-five million dollars coming out of the downtown TIF. We're already giving three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in infill money. We're giving two hundred thousand dollars to move that building, that metal building. We're giving a lot at the northeast site or the, out by the airport. We paid twenty-eight thousand dollars to remove the panels. We're we're doing tax abatements of ninety-five percent for years one to five, ninety percent for the next five years and eighty-five percent years eleven through fifteen. I cannot in good conscience pay five hundred thousand dollars for a hundred and thirty-two feet of land that maybe someday that we're gonna develop it. A perfect example, in my opinion, is in that two thousand, or twenty nineteen, we paid two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for a sand volleyball court next to Cadillac Lanes that's been sitting empty for six, five and a half years. So I can't support it, that's just my opinion. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So capitalizing on that statement, can we afford this? Afford anything. Just borrow.
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. Yes, we believe we can afford it. You may recall, we did bond some money for some downtown development as well. So you're paying back the bonds per year, which allows you to have the 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 TIF revenue coming in on an annual basis to pay for other projects as well.
So the increase from one million to seven point three million, is that correct? That's.
Seven point five.
Seven point five billion. Ninety-five percent of that is going to go back to the developer for five years? And not into the TIF district?
Correct, out, after rebates, there'll still be about eighty thousand with about, what, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand going into the debt service levy and then about forty to forty-five thousand going into the TIF itself.
Compared to now, which would be?
I'm guessing maybe thirty thousand might go into the TIF at the at the current value.
Okay, so we need this project. I mean, that that building has been an issue and for a long time, I've had a lot of people when I was on Main Street, various companies or storefronts or restaurants in that area saying, what's gonna happen to that building? Once I got elected, I went to go have pizza with my wife and the first question the owner asked is, hey, now that you're in council, can you tell me what's happened to that building? Like, I just started, I have no idea what's happening to that building. There's been a lot of work to put the building in the state that it is now, which looks significantly better. My concern is fiscal here, it's not about, we do need the building, a hundred percent. We need the residences, we need the, we need the commercial, we need everything that that building is going to bring. Does this project not happen if we don't do this?
The developers are online, they can probably tell you exactly those answers.
Great.
All right, who we have online now? Which person? All right, Dave, it's a lot of questions around this project and of course, that that building and just even as mayor, I can understand the concerns about the five hundred thousand dollars. But tell us a little bit about the vision of the project. You know, folks want to be assured that this is going to be a a really good thing for the city. It's going to bring in revenue and citizens. So can you talk about the project and your vision?
Yeah, absolutely, so appreciate the time, everybody. Four months from now, I'll be in four years in this project. So I've been involved from the early site visit days, discussions about what to do, to where we are today. You know, we initially received an allocation of workforce housing tax credits for sixty-nine units. We were able to bump that to seventy-eight when we were looking at leaving the metal panels on the exterior of the courier building. We had a lot of conversation with, you know, people at at Main Street Waterloo, Waterloo Development Corp, Vandy Walling Associates and, you know, it was clear to us that the community's preference was to try to move forward without those metal panels. For us internally, what that meant was a lot of risk on losing our historic designation. So we already had a part one approval on both buildings. So while this is seen as one project in the eyes of the State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service, it's actually two. So we submitted two applications for a part one approval, received one for both. After having discussions with the folks I just mentioned, we made the decision to try to move forward with the panels being removed. We knew that it would, from an aesthetic standpoint, be better for the downtown. It would be more attractive for tenants, it would allow us to actually utilize the middle area of each each building, each floor to allow for like storage units, you know, a amenity, so on and so forth. It would mean, you know, we would lose some units, but at the end of the day, you know, we felt it was best for the project and the community. Unfortunately, National Park Service was not in favor of removing those metal panels and so they rejected our ability to move forward. We contested it, it was probably about a ninety, one hundred and twenty day process where we were doing what we could to kind of fight that historic designation knowing that the metal panels from the seventies or eighties were historic, but the building from the forties, thirties was not. So that decision actually lost us two point three million dollars of tax credit equity. So our gap on the project jumped by two point three million dollars. So what we've done for the last eight months this year is reworked the floor plans, the the project, the pro forma. I think I have probably a hundred different pro formas on this project. Two weeks ago, we submitted our part two application to State Historic Preservation Office, National Park Service. So that was a big undertaking, I mean, you're talking one building when the project has two. So it's been a struggle trying to figure out how to get it to that point. That allows us to really shift our attention to finishing the drawings on the courier building. We are currently finalizing our our roof plan so we can submit a permit to put a new roof on the building. We are close to having our budget finalized for the demolition and relocation of the metal building. So we have a a local person who we're talking to about utilizing that space. And, you know, we're hoping that, you know, really start to see some construction around the end of this year. And that goes beyond, you know, obviously what the 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 roof permit will entail. But, you know, we'll have seventy units, mixture of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, studios ones and twos, we will have the first floor commercial space. The lower level will be covered parking, so I think it's about forty-four parking spaces. And then we'll utilize the the onsite parking. We hope that this leads to a future phase, but obviously we understand that that would come with, you know, hopefully buying a piece of ground. But we want to complement what's downtown, the convention center. And, you know, frankly, I've been involved in this project for so long, I I just want to see it happen.
And I think the question that council member Charles had asked, there's a little bit of angst for the five hundred K on this project. Where does that amount stand with this project happening or not happening?
Yeah, so my apologies for not hitting that directly, I got a little bit on my soapbox, so my bad. I won't speak directly for the owner, but I did just mention, you know, we had made a decision that lost us about two point three million dollars in the pro forma. So five hundred thousand, yes, it would go a long way. Like I said, I'm not gonna say yes or no, but it's very hard to make it work without it. Yes, it it adds substantially to the gap. It puts the owner in a negative equity position at the time of closing, which, you know, obviously when you're in that position is not seen as a as a wise investment. We have a lot of money into this project and so it allows us to kind of get made whole, to move forward. So I I apologize, I can't say affirm yes or no, but definitely leaning towards no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So again, this is a project that I think we we desperately need for downtown. We've been, it's been mentioned by several people that are very important to downtown, of its importance. And it's it's, the challenge is, so really, this is us not buying this. I mean, we're getting this building, which is great, but really what we're doing is ensuring that this project happens. What benefits do we have of purchasing this building? We're not purchasing it. Or this air, this, this land, sorry, that's what I mean.
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning Development Director. So yeah, just to to clarify, yeah, the metal building that is there, you know, if they tear that down and rebuild it, an eight thousand square foot building in one of our industrial parks, that will clear that metal warehouse out of downtown, so that'll clear up that space. And that'll also give us a new eight thousand square foot building in one of our industrial parks for new businesses, small business tenants, all that. And then the second part is the acquisition of the land with the metal building being gone. So then we would have some land in downtown Waterloo for redevelopment purposes, obviously. This is right at the, you know, the Cedar River Dam area, the walkway. So this is a very important part of downtown that we want to see redeveloped, next to our convention center and all that.
Do we have any potential, do we know of anyone who's interested in this?
So as part of this agreement, the developers we're working with right now will have a five year option. So obviously, if they do this project and it goes well, they could come back and do some new construction there. We have had Vanderwall and Associates kind of put together some drawings to show other buildings being built around the renovation of the historic buildings. And if they do not exercise that, then we would have some land downtown where we could show to other other developers.
What I would like to see from the city here is we need a very clear plan of what is going downtown? Why is it going there? Because you're right, this is another piece of land that we can use in order to develop. And I know Vanderwall has created plans for us, but I I think we need a stronger focus on those plans and then have intentions behind the decisions we make. So that way, when we have an opportunity like this, we have three phone calls to make. Now, of course, I'm obviously speaking in a in a perfect world, but I just want to make sure that if we're we're not purchasing property or with the intention of waiting for a reaction as opposed to having a forward-thinking plan saying, okay, well, we're gonna get this new building, which is gonna bring this many residents, because it's gonna bring a lot of people downtown and it's gonna bring new jobs downtown, because if we're getting new market fronts in new areas, that'll bring new businesses, will bring more work, which is what we want. But then it'd be nice to, from there, already have a forethought of this is what we're doing in this new area. But we we do need this building taken care of. Thank you for clarifying if this project was able to be done without this or not.
Well, and just a note, I mean, yeah, you're right on track. I mean, we, you know, we we just approved another contract for Vanderwall and Associates to work on a downtown master plan. Obviously, our recent partnership with the WDC to where they are, some of the lands that they have acquired and they're demolishing or we're demolishing in partnership with them and they're reimbursing us. So we will have some more land in downtown for redevelopment. So that gives Vanderwall some specific sites to show some buildings on. The reason I say that is they have architects on staff that can kind of show conceptual drawings. It may not be what's built there, but it helps other prospects, developers, clients to envision what could go there. We actually did that back with the old Bolin site when it was a vacant site. I believe Vanderwall had shown a forty-eight thousand square foot building there with a hundred parking stalls and that allowed Hawkeye Community College to look at that site then and say, hey, this is big enough for our site. And so it's, again, it's to kind of get that, those ideas flowing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was, this was part of the courier super block plan. The difference is, instead of the building being renovated, the plans, I believe, showed it torn down as well. So I definitely understand everybody's concerns with questions. Questions, anyone?
So I don't know, do we need, does this need to be amended this October first, twenty twenty-four? Because that is not the date that this was approved, it was August fifth of twenty twenty-four. This is the date it was filed with the county. The development agreement says that plans are to be submitted to the the building department and construction to begin within one year of the date that we approved this, which is August fifth of twenty twenty-four. But by putting the the date, it was.
But by putting the, the date it was filed, now we're, now we're three more months, you know?
I think you can definitely correct that with, with your motion to approve. Otherwise, normally if we find like a Scribner error type of thing, we'd normally file an affidavit through the attorney's office that would just basically say, hey, there was an error in the date here, but otherwise the rest of the information is correct.
So what do you need to do then to, because they haven't started construction and by the develop, the original development agreement, and it's not in the, the amended one, that it's August fifth, twenty twenty-four, and that, that construction is supposed to have started and plans are supposed to have been approved already by the building department?
Yeah, we'll have to talk to the developer about that, about what, what date they're looking at and see if a, a further amendment is needed for that action.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask that.
And as, as a, you know, Mr. Charles got a lot of valid points. My valid point is if it's such marketable land, couldn't the developer sell it for market rate? And we not take that on it ourselves? Because we're already giving them two hundred thousand dollars to move that building and we're also gonna give them an acre, probably plus of land for, to move that building either to the airport or to the northeast side and depending on what the price per, per acre is out there. I don't even know how that building ever got built, put a metal, metal building downtown with, with the historic stuff. But I, uh, we're, we're already paying a lot of money upfront to, to make this thing work. If it's that marketable land, I would say that, that they could, they could sell that land themselves, number one. Or if they have, if they have a, a five-year or whatever right of first refusal and then they decide to build something, will they be coming back for us to give them that land for a dollar? Depending on what they build on it.
Ju- just one note, none of the payments are, are until the building, until the project is complete. So the two hundred thousand dollars is not paid until there's a new building in one of our industrial parks. The five hundred thousand dollars would not be paid to them until the project is complete.
It, it's semantics because it's, it's still money we have to pay. But I'm just asking why, if it's, if it's so marketable, maybe they could get more than five hundred thousand dollars for that, for that land. But I still think it's an option that on that, between one and five years from now, if they decide to put something else on that land, that they could come back to, to this council or to Noel and say, you know, we want to build something, this is what we're gonna build. We'd like the land for a dollar and now we've paid five hundred thousand dollars for a land we're gonna give away. That's all I have, sir.
So if they come back to redevelop that, um, yeah, it is a point. You can come back and say, we want to do something, place it and buy it for a dollar. But the thing is, we need to recoup any taxable value from that spot. That's the most important thing to be able to, whatever they do to pay that back.
Yeah, I, I would note, I mean, you know, we, we run numbers on every project that we do to see how we recoup the funds. And so obviously, if they came back with another project for that, for that site that we bought, obviously, we would want it to be a, probably a mixed-use multi-story building with more residential and, and a good increase in taxable value to pay us back over time.
And I would assume council doesn't want to see it sold for a dollar. We just paid that amount of money also.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
To, to the gentleman then from FDP, you kind of led to the, the point that if we do not approve this, that the project may come to a, a halt, correct? Possibly. And you, but you.
Absolutely.
In the sentence, in, in the comments before that you made, you said you're already millions of dollars into the project. Is that correct? So aren't you like?
Not millions, we're, we're in a substantial amount of money.
So aren't you, aren't you like pot committed at this point? Or, or are you gonna, you're gonna back away from this project if this, this final thing doesn't go through? That's my question is that I think you've already invested a lot of money and we, and like I said, I, I hope you would invest in it regardless of what this decision is. But I just wanted to clarify that. There has already been a, a substantial amount of money put towards this project by both yourself and the city. Correct?
Yeah, um, so appreciate the question. So I'm actually with Build the Suit, not FDP, but we are working with the organization. Yeah, when it comes to the money involved, obviously, you know, it's, it's well over six figures for, you know, architectural fees, historic fees, other soft costs, you know, some of the, some of the demolition upkeep, so on and so forth. We have submitted our DD set drawings, so that's typically the requirement for the National Park Service for the part two approval. We are now taking our, we would now, after tonight, look to take our Courier Building drawings forward to that level and then eventually the permit-ready drawings. So going to the development drawing level and then the permit level is, is quite another investment. So a decision would have to be made after tonight to move forward if the project was not funded. So like I said, I, I, I do not work for Mr. Carver. I'm, I'm with Build the Suit. But I've been working on the project for, for four years and, you know, feel like you can't say what, what I did. And so that's where we are at. You know, that's kind of a ballpark of what we have paid. There would be a substantial amount of additional money to take it to the permit-ready set.
Thank you.
Is there, so and just for twenty-five second lesson on this one is that this project, Blackwell and Carver were in partnership. They split in partnership. Blackwell got a couple of other buildings. Carver's group got this building. We were very concerned that we hadn't seen anything happen to this place in a very long time. So they've been in the plannings and works for this. They've gone through things with their historic tax eligibility, removing that silver panel. I didn't know silver panel was more historic than the actual building that was built before the historic panels. But yeah, we're at an impasse right now. But can you, can you, just, just because, you know, we're not getting any younger on this council, or at least I'm not. If, if, just say, for instance, if it did go through tonight and I have no idea, I'm not pre-doing anything with council, when can we expect to, to see something happening? Like, what's, what's?
Yeah, so we, we will have our, I, I, we will. Our plan is to have the, the permit for the roof this month, so August. At the same time, we will be updating those drawings for the Courier Building since it's not historic. So we can move rather quickly on that one. We're, we're not under as much review from, you know, other third parties. That building, feel confident in saying, could be under construction still this year. And then the Montgomery Ward side, which is historic, would, would start after the historians have approved the part two. So that has been submitted. Like I said, it was a couple of weeks ago. You know, you have your ninety to a hundred and twenty day period before, you know, really you can receive that approval. We've already, you know, talked to the lenders and the tax credit people about the structure of this and moving it forward. But now we are looking to go full steam ahead on the Courier, so that way, you know, really that would start this year.
Okay, so we, we, so the permit would be pulled within the next month or so for the roof portion of it. And the hope is to work on the Courier side, start working on that by the end of this year. And then whatever the needs to be approved on the other side with the historic portions of it, that part will, will come, come second.
Yep, yeah, it's quite a puzzle. It's been fun.
Right, yeah, it's, uh, we had the Iowa League of Cities here a couple of years ago and it was one of the biggest eyesores we have, so. But yeah, council has a tough decision today. Dollars are tight, as was mentioned. So council, ready to vote or some more discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Six, seven, and eight, please.
Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a temporary act, access agreement with McDonald's USA LLC located adjacent to twenty-two twenty-two Logan Avenue and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number seven is adopting resolution approving a temporary easement in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven dollars with CNS Properties LLC located at ten eighteen La Porte Road in conjunction with the La Porte Road Phase Two Reconstruction Project and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that, said documents. Number eight is a request by Michelle and ISAM, formerly known as Michelle and Clark, for an encroachment agreement to allow a fence on city-owned right-of-way in the R two, one and two family residence districts located at seven sixty Cloverdale Avenue and Lucas Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
A motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I, I, I got a real issue with number eight. And the reason I do is, is, is I was on the, at planning and zoning and on the board of adjustments. And I'm curious because we, we require a permit for fences, but I don't think we inspect them. We just require the permit. Because they said, they, they would have to submit a plan and the fence had to be on their lot line and they encroach another twenty, twenty-some feet into the city right-of-way. And, but this is one of the properties, the one adjacent to it, directly to the, to the south of it, did the same thing. And I don't know what's going, why, why we would require a permit and then not ever inspect fences. I, I did fencing at my, in my house this year and then I had permit, I stuck the thing on the, on the window and no one ever came out and inspected it. And, and, and they would have caught this had they, had they inspected this, this, that it's on city right-of-way and not on their lot line.
Mr. Anderson? Do more than check into it. All right, other discussion? Madam Clerk, six, seven, and eight.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, six, seven, no, eight.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes, six, seven, no on eight.
Mr. Charles?
Same as, as Creighton Smith.
And Mr. Simon?
Yes, on six and seven, no on eight.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
That fails. Uh, eight fails, six and seven pass. Could someone take ten, twelve, and thirteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is resolution approving a, a first amendment to the development agreement with Midwest Development Company to amend timeline completion for three single-family homes and allow for the construction of total of thirteen single-family homes and five duplexes in, located in the Lincolnshire Edition subdivision and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number twelve, a resolution approving supplemental agreement, number two, with ACOM of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, Hansborough Avenue, Highway Twenty Improvements Contract Number eleven thirty-six and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number thirteen, a resolution approving a construction-related services agreement with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in con- conjunction with the replacement of Passenger Boarding Bridge Project FAA AIP three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero five seven dash twenty twenty-five and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote on ten, twelve, and thirteen.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, could someone take fourteen and fifteen?
Is there a fifteen? I printed this this afternoon, that's why I wonder.
I'll take it.
Whoever has it, could you read it?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the following resolutions. A resolution approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement for construction-related services with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa for the zero-dollar change, moving funds from ACOM to subcontractor Braun Intertect in conjunction with the payment rehab rehabilitation project FAA AIP number three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero five three and three dash one nine dash zero zero nine four dash zero five six and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number fifteen, a resolution approving an agreement with Wind Cave, Inc. of Phoenix, Arizona for the payment processing in conjunction with the installation of EMV credit card readers at Waterloo Regional Airport and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All of these civil penalties are three hundred dollars. Was wondering if someone could open up the hearings to all of them, just hearing and ordering, assessment of three hundred, read the store, and then the last part.
Okay, um, yes. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing, hearing and order assessing three hundred dollars civil penalty to BP Fuel DBA Star Mart at one twenty-seven Street. We have Family Dollar at one sixteen oh eight University Avenue, Casey's General Store at sixteen oh four La Porte Road, Casey's General Store at nineteen hundred West Ridgeway Avenue, R Smoke Plus at thirty-eight twenty-one University Avenue, R Smoke Plus at thirty-six twenty Kimball Avenue, Prime Mart number five at five oh eight Broadway Street, Casey's General Store number two eight six six at fifty-one East Tower Park and Kingstar at twenty-one thirty-five East Mitchell Avenue.
Second.
Finish that last part.
For the sale of tobacco to minor first offense.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made with the second. Mr. Peterson, you have comment?
Is there anybody here from any of those establishments for the, for the public notice or the hearing? Seeing none, I think we can close the, the hearing aspect and move to the resolution, Your Honor.
So, uh, could you give him clarity on what his resolution should be?
We just need a motion to close the hearing first.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the hearing and receive the attorney's comments.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Hearing closed. That's why I wanted him to read it so the folks can.
That it?
And then we need to do a resolution approving and then you can go through and kind of like how you opened the hearings.
Okay, so I'd like to adopt a resolution assessing the penalty. Civil penalty to BP Fuel DBA Star Mart at one twenty-seven Jefferson Street. Three hundred dollar penalty for Family Dollar sixteen oh eight University Avenue. Same penalty to Casey's General Store at sixteen oh four La Porte Road. Same penalty for Casey's General Store at nineteen hundred West Ridgeway Avenue. Same to R Smoke Plus at thirty-eight twenty-one University Avenue, R Smoke Plus at thirty-six twenty Kimball Avenue. Same to Prime Mart number five at five oh eight Broadway Street. Same to Casey's General Store, Casey General Store number twenty-eight sixty-six at fifty-one East Tower Park Drive. And same to Kingstar at twenty thirty-five East Mitchell Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Discussion, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote for all those.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, just really quickly before we go, four forty-five tomorrow, tomorrow's National Night Out. For those that are interested in writing, the bus leaves at four forty-five and we're on the dot. And we're gonna try to make it to everyone this year, so, Mr. Charles?
And move to adjourn?
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.